Good morning ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to your duty June 24th, 2019. The evening's annual campaign of the public. Clock affairs a little slow. I've got a little bit after nine so we're going to get started. Appreciate you for your presence being here taking in this business. Playing the known and supported again. We'll begin in prayer. Our God in Father and heaven will thank you for this beautiful day and all the blessings of it. Thank you for the help you've given us a life to live another day. Thank you for this community we live in, the country we live in, the safety and protection and peace that we enjoy. Pray for certain men and women who continue to be with blessed and protect him and bring them home with their loved ones as soon as possible. Be with us as commissioners today in public to help us make decisions to be in accordance with your will and be a betterment for this community and for all those who love. Christ's name in prayer again. First item on the agenda approval amendment June 26th, 2019. As soon as we approve, do you have seconds question on motion to approve? Hearing none on our favor. Financial report, 2019, June.
Yeah, I'll give a quick, just one quick thing. Essentially, that's a June 30th report, so that's the end of our fiscal year. So it's a good base to just see where we ended up. And you can see on page one, the balance sheet, there's eighty-nine thousand, almost ninety thousand dollars in the bank as of June 30th. That exceeded our expectation by about seven thousand dollars. We won't know the true carryover to the audits done. We've met preliminary with the audit firm and our accounting firm, and the audit box is over there, and they're starting on the audit right away. So I think we're going to be the first client they do. We've got everything ready to go. But this is our end of the year, which I think is interesting, and you turn on page two, and you see our revenues right there. You just look, our total revenues came in at a hundred and three percent, but our zoning permits came in at a hundred and twenty-two percent, or again, about eight thousand dollars above our budgeted number. We had a couple extra things happen. And then all the expense categories you can see are well below a hundred percent, and our total expenditures came in at ninety-one percent. Again, that's why we have about an eight thousand dollar additional surplus that we didn't anticipate because the zoning permits are up and we kept our expenses down. Again, we've got about ninety thousand dollars in the bank at the end of fiscal year. So this is an interesting, June 30th is a great report because until the audit comes out, there's your snapshot of the fiscal year, and we're pretty proud of that at this point. And I appreciate what the Budget Committee's done the entire year for me to help us get us there. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Hearing none on the motion. Wonder if we should, hearing none as we approve? Two seconds, question discussion on motion to approve? Hearing none on our favor? I am thinking instructions here.
Just in your packet as courtesy. Again, no action this last month unfortunately. City's been sort of working on the streetscape out front and a few other projects, so we haven't got on our two main projects, Maple Tree and Center Estates, too, as our goal is to get those done by the end of the year. But we didn't make any progress this month, but they're on your packet, just for information purposes.
Questions? Question. Hearing none on item need subdivision approval. I have those persons that like to call them subdivision. What would my part of the city do?
All right, you just heard Chairman say the address and acres, and that's pretty much my report right there. Now, the only other thing I will add is that 2.315 acres coming off a fifteen-plus acre farm. It's interesting, it does show a fifty-by-sixty septic tank easement to the north part of the property that the applicant chose to, as opposed to bringing on to the piece of property, just show it as an easement on the neighboring property. Technical review looked at the plat, met all our requirements.
Technically correct.
Yep, technically correct. Hmm? Oh, we had to change the name. It's already been corrected though. Turned in and corrected. Yeah, the name on the plat was the Home and Estate, but Rebel Recreations, you can see, is actually the owner. It just was a carry forward name from the prior, but they've changed the name to the Rebel Recreations LLC.
Would that be motion, Steve?
I don't think so. I think it was noted on the technical review markup. It was communicated to the developer and they've already made the correction. It's just one in your packet.
Do you have one to approve? Do you have seconds? Question discussion on motion to approve? Hearing none on our favor? Put you down. Number two, A G E Golf LLC subdivision, zero acreage, Danville.
All right, the next two plats are actually in the Old Bridge area, and they're interesting plats, and not much we can, there was a little, everyone sort of inquire on what we're doing here, but not much to really talk about. We're creating a five-point-nine-eight-two acre track on the north side of the A G E Golf Course property, which you can see is green fifteen. You can see on your plat, green twelve, green fifteen. I've never been on a golf course, but you can see the relationship of that. It's south of the Scotty Sutherland property, which is the next plat. And what the developer's doing is cutting off a five-acre track from the rest of the golf course proper property. For whatever reason, they didn't indicate to us why they're doing that, but it is in the A G E Golf Incorporated name. There's restrictive covenants, HOA stuff out there, so this is just something that the golf course is doing for some reason. It's zoned, GRA, interesting enough, residential, but it's a five-acre track that's tied in with the golf course. And again, I'd be glad to answer any questions. Technical review looked at it, meets all our requirements. And the plat just had a couple minor housekeeping issues to fix on it.
Motion to approve? Hearing none as we approve? Two seconds. Right discussion on motion to approve? Hearing none on our favor? Put you down. Three, Scotty Sutherland subdivision.
It's half acre, just over half acre. Yeah. This is just north of the plat you just looked at. Mr. Sutherland owns the property we just saw on the prior plat to the north, approximately about twenty acres. And he's cutting off a point-five-six-zero acre track on the front corner of his property. You can see on the plat, he's the remainder kind of on all the sides, and then the golf course is to the northwest side of his property. And plat met all our requirements. And again, it's zoned, GRA. Mr. Carroll used the new terminology we've been talking about so much, the R1A. It's actually still GRA. And GRA lets you cut off as small as a ten thousand square foot lot. You can see this is twenty-four thousand plus square foot. Again, just over a half acre, zoned residential, and it meets all our requirements. And technical review recommended approval to you guys.
Question discussion on motion on this item?
I apologize, Mr. Carroll's here if there's any questions you guys might have for him.
Do you have one to approve? Hearing seconds? Question discussion on motion to approve? Hearing none on our favor? Put you down. Number four, Enzo Bass, Betty Tenney subdivision, two-point-oh-one-nine acres, thirty-four thirty way up.
Yeah, this plat's in your packet again. Mr. Carroll is the surveyor on that, and you heard the acreage, just over two acres. Interesting thing, it's, the remainder is, or the farm was approximately eighty-nine acres, we're cutting off two acre track. The interesting thing is this area is zoned GRA out in the county. So this whole property is zoned residential, which is a little weird when you look at the zoning map, it just sort of sits out there. It was zoned a long time ago, converted from the R1 way back in the day. And so the plat had a few technical issues, it's zoned GRA, but everything else was fine. Again, we're cutting off a two acre track off an eighty-nine acre farm. Everything in the area is clearly agriculture, but there were no issues on the plat except some minor labeling things for the GRA labeling. And again, Mr. Carroll's here if you have any questions.
Do you have one to approve? Do you have seconds? Question discussion on motion to approve? Hearing none on our favor? Put you down. And number five, Brent Spring Gate subdivision, point-six-four-two acres, A G E Duncan Hill.
Alrighty, so this plat, if you got it in for anybody else, sort of walk you through it from some directional issues. On the east side of the plat, you see the Track One, right there on Duncan Hill Road. That property is actually being, a piece is being cut off to the rear that you see is labeled as parcel A. So Track One will reduce down in size to point-two-seven-two acres. You see that at one-eighty-four Duncan Hill, again, on the east side of the plat. To the west side of that property, that parcel's being added to the two slivers you see on the north, when Duncan Hill kind of makes the bend there. So those are being consolidated, which would be the first track. It's labeled first track, second track, and parcel A. Those three tracks then are consolidated, that would create a zero-point-six-four-two acre track. This whole area is zoned GRB, or what we know, used to know as R2 back in the day, allow single-family or duplex with fairly modest setbacks. And again, we're, it's called the consolidation plat because we're putting those three pieces together, but we are creating that Track One on the east side of the plat that would be one-sixty-four Duncan Hill Road. Again, Mr. Carroll's here if you have any questions. It meets all our technical requirements except a couple little minor labeling issues again on the plat that's already been corrected.
As soon as we approve? Do you have seconds? Question discussion on motion to approve? Hearing none on our favor? Put you down. Out of mouth public hearings, Megatown Aircraft Training System Corp., five aside plan amendment, aircraft planning, maintenance, product, twenty-eight twenty-eight violation, United Corporation Drive.
Alrighty, so, interesting enough.
This being a public hearing, if you have any comments, you may ask, you can open your mic, introduce yourself, put your name and address, so we have it on record.
Thank you. And this is a good point to point out why our room looks a little different, and I apologize if, as we're moving towards the screen here for the folks in the audience, but the city has a public hearing, or has a public meeting at twelve to three to interview some consultants, so they've set this room up for the twelve o'clock meeting, and we're kind of pushed on this end. But we are going to refer to the PowerPoint up here. You guys have some of these maps in your packet. But this, interesting enough, on our agenda, we go through site plans typically pretty fast, but I want to at least spend a minute here. This is possibly the biggest item on our agenda today, there's other things, but this is a pretty big deal in our community here, and a representative of Megat, Palmer Engineering, Jody Lassers here, and Josh with EDP. This is a big project, and it's exciting project. You see the location on the zoning map, one-ninety corporate. Megat's one of our corporate citizens here, and they're doing a major expansion. And any other day, I think it was reported in the paper, I saw an article, an expansion of this magnitude, the number of jobs, the investment, as a brand-new expansion in a town would be celebrated, I'm sure, with ribbon cuttings and a lot of big deals. When we're doing expansions internally, sometimes they just end up at the planning commission's, the site plan approval. But the mayor reached out to me this morning, I don't think he's going to be able to be here. Everyone's excited about this. There's a lot of moving pieces to make all this work, and they've worked hard. Palmer Engineering's worked hard, we've been talking for a while. And so we want to walk you through this expansion. It grows the facility from a hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand square foot to just over two-hundred-and-seventy-five, well, it's actually two-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand-five-ninety-four. And again, it's on twenty-eight plus acres. The zoning maps up there, it shows you kind of the site from that location as relates to the industrial park. There's a zoomed-in portion of the site, and I think this shows some of the challenges that Palmer Engineering had to deal with. We've got a building drainage, it's, we've got a drainage kind of facility, it was designed to deal with some regional, and so to get the building expansion, the parking, the landscape, and if you look at what's happening in your site plan next, and you think about where we started with this site, to handle the drainage, handle the parking, do the building phasing that they're attempting to do was a pretty big deal, and it's perfect on paper as far as we're concerned. So it feels a little disingenuous to the client that they've spent so much work for us to just come up and say it looks good, meets all our requirements, but literally, this plan came in without us putting a red line on the document. It was absolutely perfect when it came in. They spent a lot of work on this, looking at our standards. And it's interesting to note, in this time when we're here later, we're going to talk about the zoning ordinance, we're in this kind of old ordinance, new ordinance, possible change, there was a lot of discussion about when new ordinance might come into effect. There would have been some benefits and some design maybe changes with, maybe with parking, but they designed this under the old standard, because that's our current standard, because those are our rules today. If we were further down the road in the zoning ordinance, the parking would have changed, possibly some travel ways, some landscaping, but they're ready to move forward with this, so they designed this plan, knowing that we're in the middle of changing the zoning ordinance, we talked about that some, and just got us to plan the way it needed to be. Our site plan changed though, requirements did change in May, so they were able to take the benefit of some of the revisions we made to site plan submittals, the timelines, the new fees, those kind of things. So I hope that was beneficial to them to make this an easier process. So we'll walk through a couple exhibits real quick. There's the basic site plan that you see in your packet, and again, it shows the building, shows the expansion in gray, and it shows two future phases that potentially would happen into the future. Also shows the parking, and I'm jumping over the screen here, some additional parking, landscape, existing, new, and then of course, you've got a chart in your, on your site plan that lays all those numbers out. It's interesting to know, the existing parking was seventy-five spaces. The required parking was one-eighteen. They're showing two-hundred-and-nineteen spaces on the plan. Again, our numbers would have been different, our requirement would have been different if we were further down the road with the new zoning ordinance amendment. This document was in your plan, it shows the drainage and grading, again, very complicated drainage scheme Palmer and the applicant put together back here to make all this work, to handle what they need, as well as kind of still a regional component that happens in that area. And I'm going through these again kind of fast, and I don't want to, again, be disingenuous to them, I'll let them speak about some of this. This is the landscape plan, a pretty good one on my standards. I mean, this is a really good landscape plan that came in, that we'll be able to utilize in a pretty efficient way when we get down to the zoning permit phase of this. Again, the next sheet shows future phasing of the facility, and then these are building elevations that were submitted for the facility. So that goes on to the next project. So again, everything on this plan met our requirements, was submitted timely. Palmer was great to work with, the whole team showed up at tech review. Tech review was interesting, for the first time, the city folks joined us at that. Fire, engineering, everyone was there, and we had a real positive tech review too. So met all our requirements, and the applicants are here, and Jody's here, Palmer Engineering. I may turn it over to them for any comments, but if you guys have any questions for me, I'll be glad to answer. Again, it meets all our requirements, and tech review would recommend approval on that.
Questions? Steve on that. Good morning, hell. My name is Chris Mitchell with Palmer Engineering. So thanks for the kind words. Our team did put a lot of time and effort into this to give a good product to Megat. I'd like to, just initially, just make a quick statement regarding the project. This plan is necessary due diligence for an expansion project that is conditioned upon preliminary approval of financial incentives by the Kentucky Economic Development Finance Authority. Beyond that, if you have any other questions regarding the project, I'm happy to answer them, but Steve really did a good job of going over it. It was a somewhat complicated project as our Phase Three expansion, but I think it turned out really well and provided, met all the requirements for the City of Danville and the planning commission. But if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
With regard to the expansion, just enlighten us on what will happen next? What's the intent of the expansion, and what do you know?
What's the intent, as far as what's going to happen with the expansion? Well, I may ask, Steve, you want to elaborate on that? Steve Henry's here with Megat, he can, he has more details to.
Sure. I'm Steve Henry, I'm the facilities manager for Megat here in Danville. As you know, we're an aircraft wheel and brake manufacturer. Our production demands are growing, you know, the company as a whole is growing, and contingent upon the approval of the financial incentives, we hope to, the lion's share of our production expansion will be here in Danville. So we will be adding more furnaces, more production capability to the Danville operation, and then have plans to continue to do so in the future. Danville has been good to us, Boil County, Jody.
Can you talk to the general panel?
Well, again, it's all contingent upon the approval of the incentives. Our hope is that we get approval on those incentives the end of August, and we would like to start the expansion. We'd like to break ground in September if possible. We'd like to move this along and have this facility up in an operation early next year.
And how many additional jobs?
I don't have those totals with me. Our production people here, it will be south of a hundred, probably long-term more than that, but conservatively.
Any other questions? Thank you. Anyone from the public that would like to speak in favor of this? Hearing none, anyone from the public that would like to speak in opposition? Hearing none who would consider this public hearing closed on this item? Any questions? Second? As soon as we approve? Do you have seconds? Question discussion on motion to approve? Hearing none on our favor? Put you down. Thank you all for that. Public hearing on item two has been tabled. We'll hand it to you on commission amendment, chapter nine, Junction City Future Land Use Map. Motion to take that off the table. Do you have one to take it off the table? Hearing seconds? Question? Discussion on motion to take this off the table for discussion? Hearing none on our favor? Put you down. So the public hearing is now resumed for the Future Land Use Map for Junction City.
Alrighty, should have a map like this at your seat, or was in your packet. And it was on the agenda last month, but it was tabled, and I'll explain why. Again, this is a big deal on our agenda too, actually, something I'm personally kind of proud of. Been a lot of work put in on this for several months, and it's another step in our process to get Junction City fully back integrated into the planning and zoning and land development in this part of the county. Again, seven or eight months ago, we formed a map committee that was with the mayor, some elected officials, some other officials in Junction, myself, Bluegrass Add, and we started drafting a future land use map for Junction City. They've adopted the conference of plan, as you know, the goals and objectives. Subregs are back in play, but we've got to get a future land use map back in play. Then the next steps obviously are to get a zoning ordinance built. They've indicated they'd like it to look a tad bit different than maybe what we're working on right now for Danville and the rest of the county, and that's fine. And then we need a zoning map, and this will be the jump-off point of the zoning map. So we had multiple drafts of this future land use map, multiple drafts. We met with the airport board manager and did some stuff uniquely down there by the airport, and it's got some interesting things on it. Our EDP folks moved over there, but further back in the room, but as you can see, we've created some job-related development potential on this in that brown category, and I'll walk you through that in just a minute. But what we basically did is had the map ready to go, and we had an open house. We advertised in the paper, our intern's sitting up there, Courtney up there at the top there, she went out and put flyers all over the town. We stuck them on BP, Hardee's, Dollar Store, wherever they'd let us put a flyer up, we put them up. And we had an open house on a Saturday from nine till noon, and we went down there on a Saturday, and we got about a dozen folks came out. At that hearing, our open house wasn't the hearing, there were a couple comments relayed to us, so we tabled this item at the last meeting, so we could correct the map based on the comments. But before we corrected the map, we reconvened the map committee, and we met with them on July, right, day after July fourth or something like that. We met with the map committee, sat down and went through all the comments, and then they gave me guidance clearly on what to fix on this map. And I'll point out what was different from the map you had versus what we changed. This little area here on the three-hundred route, there was a property owner came in this area and asked that we carve off this brown category, which is our mixed-use employment. Again, the mixed-use employment is meant to be a jobs-creating area. It can be commercial, it can be retail of any size, it could be industrial. It currently is a fairly big farm, but we targeted that simply because its location and proximity to the airport. And then talking with the airport, they saw some benefit of, you know, job creation in this part of the county. But these property owners came and asked if we'd carve them a little buffer, and we made that change. The Spring Valley issue was a mistake on my part, we'd actually made that brown because we brought it up to the airport. We've actually had a code enforcement issue there and got very familiar with Spring Valley Road, and we've been out there a lot. And we realized it's a residential neighborhood of still some caliber and viability, so we relabeled that back to residential. A gentleman came in that showed us that some property had already been zoned in this area, and he thought the land you saw to go out and cover all the property, he used to have zoned, even though we don't have zoning anymore. And then we made another small change on high density. It could be the highest densities that you could put in an urban area. We have no categories of that in the City of Danville, interesting enough. This is high density where you could do apartments over sixteen units an acre. So then generally on the map, I'll describe, so we made all the changes that was, that were requested of us, and you see those reflected on this map. So again, the brown is mixed-use employment, the yellow is pretty much our low density, the pinkish color is commercial, the brown is moderate density, and this is mixed-use residential. The committee gave me clear guidance on that. You know, again, I was a novice to this area. We walked around, we drove around, and I learned about the city, but they pretty much labeled these things that they thought was most appropriate. And we did use the old zoning map as a basis. And again, to label one-twenty-seven, commercial, of this depth in the main drag through the city, moderate density where we have some smaller lots, all those things sort of made sense as we moved through. The biggest issue was making this pretty big farm mixed-use employment. But interesting enough, that property owner came to the, he was one of the ones that came to the open house. We had a nice discussion, one-on-one, he followed up with elected officials, and he was pretty much on board with that. So he said he's going to farm it, far as he knows, but down the road, he didn't think that is a bad thing to have that labeled mixed-use employment. And that's always positive when a property owner comes out on a major change like that and gives us kind of, they're okay when we're making something so dramatically different. The old future land use map had all of this low density. It was all yellow. Most of the whole town was yellow as the old map. Again, there was an oh-seven map. So there's a lot of changes here, our new style of land use. Danville's next on the to-do list because it needs done. This is a generalized land use like we did in Perryville, and I think it's very similar in style, and it's unique for Junction City, and they were okay with it. They've looked at it, and it's here now to be approved if you guys see fit. If it's approved, it would be an amendment to the conference of plan technically, and we advertise it that way, and it becomes their future land use map as we move forward. Yes, ma'am?
Is all this part of Junction City?
No, the city limits, we went a little bit outside it. Most of all of this is, the area we drifted out a little bit on, there's a little bit of confusion where the city limits actually is due to some recent annexations, so the map varies. You can see the city limits, for example, this sliver is in the county, in city, in the county, back in the city. We generally, some of this was old land use that was already out there, that's some of that low density, we didn't change it. This was in, this is in. Some of this drops out right here, but again, that's the old stuff that was already, there's already actually land use in play out in the county. So there is a few little slivers that we sort of worked on some stuff that jumps out of their city limits. And then clearly, this portion of the airport is actually in the next county. We just showed that as reference that that's all the airport's desired land use, but obviously, your jurisdiction is in our county to do land use, but to go outside the city limits a tad bit here and there, it's the Junction City Future Land Use, but it's really kind of the south side of the county land use, and all these ag areas were already there. But this does put the right labeling on everything that you see on this map as far as the current labeling. And again, we had an open house, I thought was pretty positive. Mr. Hensley came by, which is a fairly large developer, been working on something in this area, some citizens, some different folks, and again, this property owner came in, which I think was really positive. And we sat there from nine to three and greeted folks and just talked to them one-on-one as they walked in and looked at the maps and took handouts home.
Where is Junction City State Commission on this?
It's down here on, oh, on this? Yeah, I thought you meant where are they at? Reason I say that is, they've got a problem with their city hall right now after a flooding, and right now they're in a transition. Been meeting in some interest- Been meeting in some interesting places. It doesn't go before them, this, you're our final action on a future land use map. The mayor's on the committee, our commissioner, at one time Sonia was a commissioner, she's now a planning commissioner, she's on the committee. Two other elected officials were on the committee, and then we showed it to them every time we changed it. We took it to the council meeting and just showed it to all of them and didn't get any negative comments. But we had three elected officials, three of their seven, actually on the map committee.
Any questions, please? Hearing none, anyone who would like to speak on this item, either for ordinance? Any public hearing being called? Hearing none, all in favor? Close.
Sound like motion closed.
Jeff Mose, we approve, Terry Sackens, question, discussion, motion, public hearing? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Jeff Mose, we approve the map as presented. And Wendy Sackens, question, discussion on motion to approve? Hearing none, all in favor? Thank you.
Alright.
Item three on the public hearings, Danville full cap planning zone commission file application amendment article four five seven of the joint zoning ordinance, and the motion to take that off the table and reopen the hearing.
I'll make the motion to take it off the table and resume the.
Hearing members, if we do so, Jeff Sackens, all in favor? This is now being the public hearing, planning zone commission reopen, article four five seven of the joint zoning ordinance.
To start with, again, we did not mail out the, hope you brought your copies from last month. If you did not, I have one for you right here, if any of you need one. Anybody else need one? Yeah, that's right.
And if you, if you can add, if you, if you, if you, if you, if you guys.
Last month, we started this hearing. As you know, the book, the draft's been out before that. You guys had it in May. We gave a advanced copy to the media. It's been, we've met with different groups, chamber, other folks, as we talked about last month, we won't get into all that. Actually, tomorrow, I'm meeting with the Board of Realtors, but been talking with a lot of Realtors one-on-one and haven't had any real main concerns. Just making a presentation. In fact, it's been so positive, I think I'm going to change my topic from tomorrow, from the zoning ordinance to our online map, because there's been a lot of discussion about how our map works, and, and I think that's a good opportunity to show all the Realtors our map, so I'm going to probably scratch the zoning ordinance from that preview, because they've all been looking at it anyhow, and again, there's no comments at this point, unless someone's here. And then last month, I was walking you through it page by page by page, and you guys have been reading it. We've been talking one-on-one, some different emails have come in individually. Again, no real major concerns anyone's looked at. Henry's dug into it over the last month or so. He's given me a few comments, and if it's okay with you guys, what I thought might be more appropriate this time as opposed to walking through where we left off and going through it, is just to really get the other side, let the public get up and speak about whatever issues they have. And then at the end, I would kind of just tell you kind of where the staff is as far as some other minor changes from the last meeting that have come up, and they are very minor in nature, and then the things Henry found that needed to be corrected, and then leave it at that, answer any questions you guys might have of other things you've been reading in the document, or answer any questions you have right now. But I didn't think I'd walk you through, I think we got through, I might have got fifty-some pages, I'm not sure how far we went. But I think it was a little cumbersome how I was doing that, just page by page, but I wanted to just point out every line. Clearly, you guys have been reading it because you've been asking me questions way ahead of where we were in the presentation, and asking me technical questions, and we've been, I've been answering those best I could for you guys one-on-one. So I think it probably better served the time to just let the public get up and talk from the other end, and then I'll just answer any questions you guys might have at the tail end of the hearing, if that's okay with the chairman. Okay?
One okay with that?
Thank you.
This being the public hearing, anyone like to speak in regard to this item, please help the mic, introduce yourself, name, address, and specific and straight to the point, please.
Thank you. I'm Mark Morgan, Count Fleet Circle, Danville, Kentucky, and have practiced law here since 1981. Raised, Joni and I raised our children here, and this is our home. And I'm here on behalf of, on behalf of a long history dating back to 2014 that integrates with planning and zoning. In 2014, some of you recall, some of you do not, because you were not on P&amp;Z at that time, but Kinder Morgan, one of the larger pipeline companies in America, sought permission from the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission, or FERC, to repurpose an existing natural gas pipeline that was built during World War II for the purpose of changing that from natural gas that went from the Gulf Coast up to New England into a pipeline that would carry hazardous liquid materials called natural NGLs, natural gas liquids. And I admit, that sounds like natural gas, but it is not. It is a very different substance than natural gas. In fact, industry literature that Kinder Morgan and others have endorsed states that there is a blast zone in turn, if there's a leak and an explosion, that would, the blast zone is one-half mile on either side of the pipeline. The current, the pipeline that was being proposed runs through the center of Danville. It runs adjacent to and on the property of Hogshead Elementary. It runs near our hospital. It crosses Lake Harrington between here and Lancaster, but still in Boyle County, and that it goes, it goes right on top of our drinking water supply. It goes through some of our prime farmland and much of our agricultural land, both to the east and west of Danville. It goes all the way from Pennsylvania, Ohio, Kentucky, and down to the Gulf Coast. So this would be a reverse flow. Many of us came together to discuss this and educate ourselves more. As a result, we became, we formed a close connection with the fiscal court, the city commission, the Danville Planning and Zoning. In March of 2016, you, as a body, unanimously enacted an ordinance, which is currently the law in, in our county, to address this hazardous liquid pipeline. That same month, both the Danville City Commission and the Boyle Fiscal Court unanimously adopted that same ordinance as their own, and it became law, and it continues to be law to this day. A, a short sidebar, when, when one, as I did yesterday, looks at the Boyle County, Danville Boyle County Planning and Zoning website to see the ordinance, the currently in effect ordinance is not listed, is not present, is not found. Conversely, the proposed ordinance, which we're here to discuss today, is found, and it states that it was enacted in July 2019. I think that that could, and I invite your counsel, if at any time you're, you seek his advice, but that creates an area of confusion for an applicant if they see that a proposed law is currently in effect instead of the law that is in effect. So it could create a legal barrier to enforcing the current law that is in effect. But getting back to the proposed law, the law that is in effect that was unanimously adopted by you all, the fiscal, the fiscal court and the city commission, was also unanimously endorsed by formal resolution by the Danville Boyle County Chamber of Commerce, the Economic Development Partnership, the Heart of Danville, the Convention Visitors Bureau, the Perryville City Commission, the Junction City Commission, the Heart of Danville. So when we look at this, regardless of political party or any other difference that people may express, there was complete unanimous unity within our county and our community. In fact, in June of 2016, Madison County Planning and Zoning and their fiscal court and their city commission adopted our ordinance almost verbatim. Marion County, Rowland County, Barron County, and other planning and zonies were studying, zoning commissions were studying our ordinance at that time to determine if they were going to adopt. I have not researched whether they did or did not, I do not know. But the point is, is you were on the cutting edge of addressing a concern to our community, a serious threat to our community. And you, as you know, as members of P&amp;Z, we aren't here to address safety, we're here to, to, to address compatibility with contiguous and other land uses. And so the law that was, that's currently in effect was carefully drafted. Bruce Smith, prior to Henry becoming primary P&amp;Z attorney for you, Bruce Smith, who's in partnership with Henry, served as your attorney. Bruce spearheaded the effort to draft that ordinance that's in effect. He was assisted by Tom Fitzgerald, an attorney who is the director of the Kentucky Resources Council. In addition, I was able to assist them in drafting that, and Henry had a role at that time in drafting it three, three and a half years ago. Mr. Fitzgerald is particularly significant to this because he was the lead counsel in a Supreme Court case that was handed down in 2016, which ruled that hazardous liquid pipeline companies do not have the right of eminent domain. That was relevant because there was a hazardous liquid pipeline to carry NGLs north of us called the Bluegrass Pipeline. Some people heard about that, there was a lot of organizing about it, a lot of litigation, and that company claimed to have the right of eminent domain. When the Supreme Court ruled that they did not have the right of eminent domain to take someone's property without their, without the property owner's consent, then Bluegrass Pipeline folded up and abandoned the project because they could not get people to agree at any price to sign easements necessary for that pipeline. And that becomes important in analyzing the difference between our existing law and the There were, the proposed, the current law was drafted after taking into account public hearings held January 2015, April 2015, September 2015, and June 2016, where hundreds of Boyle County citizens and landowners attended and were heard. Equally important at those meetings, there were recorded statements from PhDs in chemistry, there were metallurgists, there was discussion of industry and governmental reports, and it was a very technical presentation and, and education regarding NGLs and hazardous liquids that would be transported and how compatible they would be with existing land uses. And that formed the technical basis for the existing law. And that's important, not only for drafting a, a law that makes sense to our community, but for a law that will withstand court challenge at a later date, because it'll be, I'll discuss this in a second, but when we met with Kinder Morgan, which we did in 2015, their design engineer, who was in California and then in New York, came to Danville and explained to us that they were putting up $5 billion with a V dollars for this pipeline, to repurpose this pipeline. And so we knew that if they were going to put up that much money, we had to design an ordinance that would withstand court challenge because they were going to try to outspend us in terms of attorneys. In 2019, actually June of 2019, we learned that P&amp;Z staff, Mr. Henry, the director, Steve, has proposed a repeal of that, that unanimously supported ordinance, and, and the ordinance that's being considered today was posed for you. And I applaud what Steve has tried to do, or is trying to do, because he is a very knowledgeable person. He knows P&amp;Z law and P&amp;Z ordinances very well. He, his heart is in the right place in terms of addressing this threat to our community. I think that there, there are shortcomings in the proposed ordinance that were not thoroughly considered. Let me get a drink of water. P&amp;Z staff sought a simple, straightforward approach, set thousand-foot setbacks from the pipeline near residences, clearly, and schools, and churches, and hospitals, et cetera. That would preclude the existing four pipelines that run through Danville from being repurposed to transport hazardous liquids. That could not be met. So that would ban or preclude use of the existing pipelines. So then, if a person cho, if a legal entity chose to comply with our proposed ordinance, then they would have to go somewhere other than the existing pipelines and build a new pipeline. And so industrial and agricultural zones were not given the same setback protections that the residential zones are. So that means breaking new ground through our prime farmland, means breaking new ground on top of what's called karst hydrology, karst geology, which is where all of our underground water aquifers are. And I think anybody who comes from a farming background knows how good the bluegrass land is, our agricultural land is. Our old ordinance protects, our existing ordinance protects our agricultural lands and our industrial lands. Our industrial lands need that protection for compatibility for a, a very good reason. Our industrial lands have...
That's not an apple. Chair.
Okay.
Just asking a question. Five, four, five, he's asking a question.
Our industrial lands merit protection for compatibility reasons, because our industrial lands is where there are inherently explosive materials generally stored, so that, that incompatibility issue would be exacerbated if a hazardous liquid pipeline were located adjacent to them. So there's not a technical or rational basis stated for any of these changes in the, there's no technical basis, whereas our existing law cites a number of studies. It incorporates by reference the testimony that was solicited from experts in support of it, and that's all done. We did that, Mr. Smith and Mr. Fitzgerald and myself, so that, and we were clear about that, so that we built what's called a legislative history that would withstand court scrutiny successfully. And our proposed legislation doesn't do that. In fact, our proposed legislation or proposed ordinance lumps hazardous liquid pipelines with natural gas pipelines and with mining. They're very different entities, and they should not be lumped together because it's arbitrary and capricious to do so, and it sends a message that NGLs and hazardous liquids... arbitrary and capricious to do so, and it sends a message that NGLs and hazardous liquid pipelines are the same as natural gas, and that is not true. Natural gas, natural gas liquids and hazardous liquid pipelines are over 100 times more explosive than natural gas pipelines. Consequently, the compatibility considerations are far, far different than they would be for a natural gas pipeline. Now, I really, another, another specific in the proposed legislation, and I like it, but it won't withstand court scrutiny, it adds to our legal problems, is that it requires that an applicant show and record 100-foot easements. None of the easements, Mr. Hunter just brought, Steve just brought you a map with the pipeline that Kendra Morgan was going to use, Pipeline 1, and all of those are 30-foot easements that were obtained during World War II. And those easements will, it would be legally impossible to, for the, for an applicant to convert those to 100-foot easements because the same reason, my basis for saying that is Bluegrass Pipeline couldn't get their easements to proceed with their plan just north of us, and I submit that it is unrealistic to think that anyone can get 100-foot easements, convert these 30-foot easements to 100-foot easements. And therefore, the proposed legislation or proposed ordinance constitutes a ban. There is no way, I submit, and I'm willing to hear other arguments, but there is no way realistically that an applicant can comply with the proposed ordinance. And if that's true, if I'm correct, and I think I am, then there, this is a complete ban of hazardous liquid pipelines in our county. And I applaud the effort to achieve that goal because I live here and I love this community, and I don't want something that dangerous in our community or that incompatible with our land uses. But to ban something under our constitution constitutes a taking. Our constitution protects private citizens from a taking of their property without just compensation in these United States, and that's a good, good law. But if an applicant who owns these pipelines says they want to proceed to repurpose them, and it's impossible to meet this requirement, and they're going all the way from Pennsylvania to Louisiana, and it's Boyle County and Madison County that's standing in their way, and Boyle County has gotten away from the conditional use permitting program that allows a due process hearing with right of cross-examination and will withstand court challenge, and we've abandoned that, and we've gone to a ban, then I submit, I guarantee you that if I were hired by the applicant, I would assert to a court on appeal that there had been a taking of my property without just compensation. Remember, in 2015, Kendra Morgan's design engineer met with us and, and told us they were putting up $5 billion to build this. The return on that investment, any, any rational businessperson is going to expect a return on investment in the neighborhood of $10 to $20 billion on a $5 billion investment. If a court were to rule that this body had banned and pipeline, hazardous liquid pipelines in our county, and they had no alternative and no use of their property, then the court would, the remedy the court would, would render would be a judgment ordering the governmental body, you all, and the fiscal court and the city commission pay that remedy. That would bankrupt our county and our city and our Planning and Zoning Committee, Commission. It would, I, I really applaud the effort. I think it's a great effort, and it is simpler. It does address some concerns that all of us have had all along with the existing law, but it is, is a minefield for legal challenges subsequent to enacting this ordinance. And I, I think the outcome would be that there would be a complete denial of any, of any application for a permit under the proposed ordinance, and although I would like to see that, it wouldn't stand up in court. I know you all have heard this time, heard things about this time and again, and I want to be sensitive to that, but this is something that we've worked on for five years now, and it was, again, remind you, it was unanimously, it was unanimous unity in our community One thing to keep in mind that I think's important is that, and this is really important, there's no reason to act right now. There's Kendra Morgan, it was a David and Goliath fight. Fortunately, all of us were David. Fortunately, all of us had an outcome that Kendra Morgan withdrew their application from FERC to repurpose Pipeline 1, and they've said it's due to economic reasons. I think that's absolutely correct, but I think that we were one of the economic reasons. When their design engineer met with us in 2015, they, I asked, why are you meeting with us? Why are you in Danville, Kentucky, one of the smaller towns on this route, taking your time and flying company officials in and hiring the Kirkland Firm, Kirkland-McBrer Firm, McGuinness Firm out of Frankfurt to represent you locally? Why are you doing this? And they said that they expected that it would be shorter and cheaper to go to the Eastern Seaboard from the Pennsylvania fracking fields and transport the NGLs that direction, but that they thought they would get very little political opposition if they came south, because people in this, in this part of the country generally don't raise up and, and put up any sort of resistance or opposition to a proposal. It's a more polite society, and he even went so far as to say it's, it's a society without the same level of education. Although I was a little bit offended, I was gratified by his candor, and I think that he, and he said, "We are surprised in Danville Boyle County has been the site where, from which all of the opposition we're having has originated." So we need to be careful, as David, against giving up that unity that we've expressed that has been successful. I think that we, our efforts changed the economics and resulted in Goliath going in a different direction. And the law that you've passed, that is your current ordinance, was the catalyst for that outcome, and I would not abandon it quickly or hastily. I would do it after due deliberation and due consultation and soliciting legal opinions from very learned individuals who know takings law and constitutional law, because the downside risk is not just the pipeline, but the downside risk is a takings finding against you and a, a just compensation judgment against you and expensive litigation to get to that point which we don't want to be at. No one is currently seeking, and there are no plans that we're aware of, to place hazardous liquid pipelines in Boyle County or to repurpose a pipeline in Boyle County. We don't have a serious threat at this time. Were that to occur, there would be hoops that have to be jumped through that would allow us in public notice, opportunity to be heard, and an opportunity to react. I propose to you that we use this opportunity and this time wisely. I think Mr. Hunter has done a good job of bringing up some things about our existing ordinance that would, that merit an additional look and employing much of his expertise to remedy, but I propose that we don't abandon our existing ordinance, which has been so effective, in order to utilize a regulatory scheme. And when I talked to Mr. Hunter about this, he stated it was a scheme that had been utilized successfully in Warren County from where, where his experience is, and I believe it was with cell towers, the location of cell towers. Have large setbacks in certain zones, no setbacks in other zones, it'd be a conditional use in other zones. Let's go in that direction, and that is very different. With a cell tower, you're talking about one property owner could grant, could easily grant the easement necessary for a cell tower. A pipeline is extremely different, an interstate pipeline. They're located already, they're large, and it would, it is not easily moved about and accommodated by the scheme. So there was no takings problem with the cell tower because there was no taking of the property, there was no complete ban. So again, now, there's, I believe we could get Mr. Fitzgerald back. I've talked to him, and he said he'd be willing to sit down. I talked to Steve when Steve arrived here, and invited Steve to meet with Mr. Fitzgerald and myself and Mr. Smith, and let's talk about rational ways to proceed to address Steve's concerns, and I think they're valid concerns. One of them is that it would be unduly burdensome on our Planning and Zoning Commission to meet the notice requirements of a conditional use permit. In a nutshell, we'd have to send letters, we'd have to put signs on property. That is a burden. Our committee of concerned citizens got the names of all the property owners, and we sent letters to them. It's not that difficult. It, it is some work, but it's not that difficult. You go to the courthouse and get them. It's much less expensive and much less difficult than defending the proposed ordinance in court. The other, the other issue, and I think, I think Steve's correct in bringing this up, is wouldn't the applicant under our current ordinance have an argument that they were being singled out and treated differently and maybe violating equal protection clause or whatever, but singled out and treated differently than other conditional use applicants? And the answer is yes. And the way they're being treated differently is that there's what's called a fee shifting provision in our current ordinance. And it states that if our Board of Adjustment sees the need, they, our Board of Adjustments may retain expert witnesses to advise our Board of Adjustments in reviewing an application for a hazardous liquid pipeline in Boyle County, and that the applicant has to pay the cost of that expert. And the reason that's in there is because there's such a disparity in the economic standing of our Boyle County Board of Adjustments and anyone, any legal entity that would apply for a hazardous liquid pipeline. And there is, there are many precedents for this sort of provision in the law. The Surface Mine Control and Reclamation Act of 1977, that has a huge impact on Kentucky because of all the surface coal mining, is such an act. It has that fee shifting provision, and it has since 1977, and it's good law in these United States, and it's because the citizens of our coalfields don't stand on same economic ground as the, as the legal entities conducting surface coal mine operations. And the, the US Congress and the courts recognize that, and they attempt to level the playing field so the courts and tribunals and administrative agencies can make an informed decision, and both sides have equal access to objective data in reviewing a permit. So there, our, our current law is carefully crafted, carefully conceived, it can stand, withstand legal challenge. There would be a legal challenge anytime somebody ponies up $5 billion. You can bet if they're told no, they're going to go to court. That's just common sense. But it would be a winnable and affordable case where, conversely, the new proposed ordinance, which I wish would be upheld by the courts because it gets right to the heart of the matter, it stops any future hazardous liquid pipelines in our county. That is a real problem in court. The only way anybody could comply is to go through our prime agricultural land and our hydrologically sensitive land, and I personally, I don't see any sense in putting our, failing to give our farming community the protection that it currently enjoys under the existing law that you've enacted. I see no basis for that. So with that, in conclusion, I hope that you will ask staff to sit down with your counsel, with Mr. Fitzgerald, maybe with Merrell Clark, who used to appear before you frequently, maybe with Henry, with Vince Pennington, Judge Pennington's son, who's Harvard Law grad and has done a lot of land use law, and others in Kentucky, if we can get them to participate and have other people look at this before you act upon it, because I've, I've asked Steve about meeting, if I can get people to meet with us out of pro bono like I'm doing, and address this issue and help us out on this. Other people may reach different legal conclusions than me. I, I guarantee you, if you asked Henry, he would, he would tell you that anytime a case is brought in court, you can find someone to represent one side, and you can find someone to represent another side. Lawyers are trained to represent their clients zealously within the bounds of the law, and other people may have a different legal opinion than me on these matters. But why not use the time we have to solicit and engage respectfully and meaningfully with others who are knowledgeable about land use law on this matter and see if we can't propose amendments to our existing law that address these concerns that Steve's raised, but still will withstand court challenge? Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Anyone else like to speak regarding this issue?
Thanks, Sarah.
I'm Sarah Valkamp, 875 Shadland, Danville. You've seen me up here before. This time, I'm representing COPC, Citizens Opposed to the Pipeline Conversion. This was a group of citizens that came together very quickly in 2015, and I'm not going to repeat, Mark did such an excellent job of giving you the history and what happened and so forth, so I'll just add my endorsement of his suggestion that to please take your time on this and to please investigate a little more before you jump into changing something that is so important and that was so carefully crafted with, with a lot of different folks involved. And the only thing I'll add to Mark's presentation is, yes, Boyle County was very active, very active, all across the spectrum of, it was completely nonpartisan, and it brought people together. But we also had regional involvement. Bluegrass, they had supported this wholeheartedly. They, they did resolutions, they wrote letters, they supported us. Kentuckians for the Commonwealth, the Kentucky Legislature had a resolution. So this was not just a little group of crazy and So this was not just a little group of crazy environmentalists doing something. This was a bigger thing. We had the National Park Service writing letters to FERC because that pipeline's came so close to Mammoth Cave. So this is something to take very seriously before you make a decision to approve, I believe it's Article Five, isn't it, Steve, that involves the pipeline? So please take your time and learn more about it, educate yourselves and listen to others. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Anyone else like to speak?
I want to focus on Article Five, page 22, Short Term Rentals. I've expressed my concern about short term rentals before this group. And I've, I've looked over this section that goes on over to 523. When you read through that, if you look at number three, I believe it is, no, number four, each room to be rented shall be designed and intended to accommodate no more than two persons. Does that mean the kitchen? The bathroom? The living room? The bedrooms? I'm not certain. As I read through this section, it appears that it must have been lifted from another source, which is perfectly legitimate. It is done frequently with legislation. The difference here is that when bodies, governmental bodies adopt forms from other sources, though the wording is gone over very carefully, usually by attorneys, to make certain that the wording is appropriate and legitimate for the governmental body for which it is drafted. Reading through this section on short term rentals, it needs editing. And I would suggest to you that the editors should be attorneys. I think that a revision of the magnitude of this deserves very careful consideration by citizens who will be affected by this law. This is an ordinance. This is a law under which the citizens of Boyle County must operate. It needs to be carefully considered and I urge you, I urge you to make sure that it is gone over thoroughly by you and by the attorneys that you choose. Thank you.
Steve?
Yep.
You have a question about 522, item four, each room to be rented shall be designed and intended to accommodate no more than two persons?
Right.
The question was, what does that one room, a closed bathroom, kitchen, or whatever?
In the Airbnb and bed and breakfast room, they're all different. Could be a suite. Basically, you rent a space, they're all different. You rent a garage apartment, you rent a whole house, maybe has each room, but basic premises, each room, sleeping quarters, whatever bedroom, has to have, you know, it's no more than two people.
Should we say, rent it uniquely?
Oh, funny enough, this came right out of the Louisville ordinance, she's correct. And that's the way it's worded in our bed and breakfast standard. And actually, the bed and breakfast standard is ours and was written uniquely for us. The Louisville standard had some of this language in it, but we added most of the other stuff around this. But Louisville has a similar Airbnb process. And I don't know, to me, it says each room to be rented. Again, some folks rent by room, some rent by floor, some rent by suite, some rent by whole house. That's the difference between hosted, unhosted, and dedicated. So there's actually multiple combinations of ways you can rent. The simple thing is if you're going to rent a room, no more than two people stay there. And two people equal one car, one parking space per each rented room. It's going to be easy for us to enforce. I'm not really that stressed out about it. We ran this by the tourism folks, CVB, the whole standard. Some Airbnb owners were on that group, walked me through and actually did, we made some changes based on them. And of course, Henry's reviewed it too.
Anyone else like to speak?
Yes.
I just can't understand why we want to change the ordinance that has been carefully conceived by the committee and all these different people and thrown away for some, by one smart man thinking of a new system that has not proven out. Okay. Item number two, we live in the agricultural zoning and that is not given the protection in this, what do you call it, small unit or whatever it exists. Temporary Airbnb stuff. It is not given the protection in there as some other zones. I can't understand that. We'd, we'd like to have the same protection in the agricultural zone and actually we'd like to have more protection. In the signs ordinance that he's redoing, I can't, I don't, I'm not familiar with what he has done to notify the, the people in the city, but I think a city ought to be given especially to proprietors. And a lot of the city people get very excited about things in the sign system. So I think there ought to be a lot of meetings and so forth so they understand what's going on. Thank you.
Anyone else like to speak?
Just for record, whatever is approved here by planning and zoning is a recommendation on the public, the City Commission, and they can alter, change, add to, or delete rights as they see fit. And it's up to them to finally prove it.
Henry, I have some questions I'd like to comment on if you would regarding the idea of Mark mentioned. I just wanted to tell a thousand-foot setback, I think, was arbitrary and unenforceable. Can you just comment on that?
Yes, I can. First of all, I had the chance to sit down with and, and speak to COPC. They provided me with useful education and counterpoint to the proposal you've heard today, much of it which Mark has summed up for you today. As regards the thousand-foot setback, well, I'd like to, I'd like to speak broadly, I guess. I see possible weaknesses with both the, the proposed ordinance and the existing ordinance. To me, the thousand-foot setback is a possible weakness with the proposed ordinance. And what I think would be best is if we could see it superimposed upon this map and see if it effectively does, as Mark said, legislate a pipeline out of this county. My suspicion is that there is still room for the pipelines to traverse the zones where they are permitted of right, but it, it could be useful to see that. But the other safety valve for that is if the thousand-foot setback prevents them from taking any route whatsoever, then the pipeline company could seek a variance from that setback.
Henry, real quick, this slide right here, I just want to point out, we have thousand-foot setbacks littered through our ordinance already. That's the old ordinance. It's Chapter Seven where we have conditional use permits. There's the thousand-foot setback for landfills, for example. We use the thousand-foot setback currently on a regular basis. I just want to point that out, that that is not a new setback number in our book or used in the future. Go ahead, sorry.
As, as Mark has pointed out, we should have some concern about whether we are effectively banning pipelines in the county. That's, that's something we should be wary of. And so, yeah, to that end, it would be good to see a map that showed where those setbacks fall, but we have the safety valve of a variance procedure from that setback if need be.
Well, secondly, he mentioned the fact that we have mining and natural gas and liquid gas all lumped together. How do you see that in regard to what he proposed?
I think that...
And I don't know if it's lumped together or not personally, I don't know.
It, it does fall in the same use standard category. And I think that Mark was talking about that with regards to there being a rational basis for what we're doing here today. And he alluded to there having been lots of studies and extensive deliberation for the prior ordinance. I believe that this body is entitled to rely upon the studies and work that went into that last ordinance as far as those studies counsel precautionary provisions in the zoning ordinance. So the fact that we've had this research in the past, I think, permits us to have precautionary measures in, in the updated zoning ordinance as well. I don't see it as a special problem that mining and other things have the same setbacks as the natural gas liquids pipeline.
He also mentioned about hundred-foot easements, thirty-foot easement. Can you just clarify what that means?
What he was talking about is a provision in the new ordinance which requires that pipeline company have plats of record showing a hundred-foot easement across any property that the pipeline traverses. As far as the size of the easements, it potentially mirrors what's already on the books. I have not looked at all of the easements that may be of record for the current pipeline. I suspect that some of them are 50 feet wide. And the existing on-the-books ordinance creates an additional setback of 25 feet from that easement. So it's effectively the same hundred-foot distance. As for the propriety of asking them to seek easements, that does ring alarm bells. I'm aware that other circuit courts in this state have permitted a planning and zoning body to ask utility to get easements for all of their lines. I've not obtained that case yet. It might be that we have to strike the easement provision if, if we find that the legal grounds for that are inadequate.
How does the new proposed ordinance differ from the current in terms of taking the properties? Does the current, in essence, set it up so we can, in essence, take property as opposed to minimum or not? Or you elaborate on that at all?
It's, so what the new ordinance sets up is a taking by prohibition on certain use. It's, we're not going out and seizing property or anything like that, but we're prohibiting the use of the pipeline by saying you have to be setback so far from certain uses. Again, I think there would be great utility and benefit to the public in seeing a map that shows how those setbacks map onto this map of the county and to what extent they block a pipeline. As far as takings under the prior ordinance, there's, there's no guarantee, and this to me is, is my concern about the, the ordinance that is on the books right now, is that the pipeline is not permitted of right in any area. Any, anywhere you want to have it, you have to go to the Board of Adjustment. Under the proposed ordinance, it's permitted of right in agricultural and industrial zones. Under the existing on-the-books ordinance, anywhere they want to use a pipeline for natural gas liquids, it hangs on the scrutiny of the Board of Adjustment. This is not a perfect analog, but in freedom of speech and religion cases, certain uses, land uses must be permitted of right in some zone. The fact that they're permitted as a conditional use, you have to get a zone change to get it, that's inadequate and that can be a, a way to facially challenge an ordinance. So I'm, I'm a little bit uncomfortable with the way that the pipeline is not permitted in any zone under the prior ordinance. And that to me is, is my concern about the ordinance that's on the books right now.
Does the current ordinance stop the pipeline from ever being operational again?
It's, it, it is a question for the Board of Adjustment and what experts they would hire to advise them. And so it, it's not, it's not a set thing from the outset. The, the ordinance allows it to go either way. It could be that they do choose to permit the pipeline total, they could just give it sections. Yeah.
If I'm a property owner and this pipeline goes through my property and it's now been shut down and no longer operational, can I refuse to give a easement as a current property owner for a new, it's used for that pipeline? And I just physically refuse to say no over my grant?
You can. The caveat to that is whether or not we find that this easement provision stands up. And that's, that's something we have to check. But like I said, there's been another circuit court in Kentucky that has upheld requiring utilities to plat all of their lines. And it's worth reviewing that case and its justifications before this thing is finally adopted by the legislative bodies.
Any other questions for, for Henry or anyone else?
Can I give a, go to, by the way, what, you mind saying what county that was in?
You might be surprised, and I think it was Warren County.
Yeah, yeah. With a gas pipeline, but I won't say more on that. But I, I wanted to quickly give you the staff's perspective on this because I, I think we just took a little bit of beating there, but that's all right. I want to explain what is not really being explained by the legal gurus here because I'm just a planner and I look at things from a different spectrum here. But I think the chart, which is the beauty of the whole thing, is what really is where we're at. And you have this in your, in your packet, and I'll point that out to you so I can show you something pretty quickly here. It's, it's pretty easy to see. Let me get my book here. We're at, it's the first few pages of Chapter Five. I'm going to give it to you here. I got to get to my right page. Hold on one second. Five, two. And the hazardous pipeline verbiage is on, I'm sorry, I got 100 and... 271 pages here in my book. So it's on five, five. And in the chart now, we have a hierarchy of charts that has use categories on the, whoops, I shouldn't do that wrong thing. Use categories on the left, permitted use types, conditional use. So the chart now lays out all the uses in our community and what zones, and the zones are across the top. And as Henry said, one of the beauties, and, and again, in my 30-year training as a planner, exactly what he just said is the premise. You can't legislate out any use in your county. As much as you might not want a landfill or an adult entertainment facility, you can't say not in our county. There has to be a place for every use in the spectrum or there becomes inverse combinations or takings risks that you have. So the beauty is every kind of use that may ever come to Boyle County, whether it's hazardous pipelines or farms or retail or drive-throughs, we have a chart, we have a hierarchy, and some things are permitted by right, some things are absolute prohibitions, and some things need a conditional use permit. The hazardous pipeline verbiage you see on five, five, again, as you heard, it's, it's permitted in the ag and industrial zones, as you would expect a pipeline in a community to be. But where it's not permitted is in residential zones. The current ordinance actually allows it in residential if you get a CUP. This CUP across the whole spectrum, county line to county line, I think is flawed. I think the requirement that the pipeline could be in residential neighborhoods is absurd. This says permitted in some places, not permitted in others, conditional uses in others. The other beauty of this, and we'll just say it out loud, the industrial districts that it's allowed in don't even exist today because they have to be zoned. So again, the client has lots of options. They can get a conditional use permit, they could seek a zone change, they could move it away somewhere. It's permitted in some, conditional in others, prohibited in others, but could get a zone change of variance or seek both. But it also has standards where it is allowed, and I think they're good standards. The thousand-foot setbacks are used regular all over the state in our ordinance and multiple ordinances. I think that we use the same setbacks for some other big uglies I'll call in the ordinance, adult entertainment, some other things. We confine animal feeding, we've had some 1,500-foot setbacks. We do some things in here to protect residential neighborhoods and people and especially urban areas. I don't think this is unreasonable. I don't think this is unreasonable, verbiage, but you gotta look at five and then you gotta turn to the standards and work through this together. The whole chapter five is a hierarchy of uses, use categories, examples, exceptions, accessories, and specific use standards. There's 36 different specific use standards, hazardous pipelines are one of them. I don't have an issue with any of the standards. What I was trying to do is quantify, and this is, I guess, where it gets a little out of bounds here, but I've heard it, my heart's in the right place, and I'm trying to do this and try to do that. But the day I was hired, I was introduced to the pipeline committee and told, hey, embrace this, here's the thing, learn it, know it, love it. And I read it, and I had some questions as a new director might. We had a three-hour conversation in Mark Morgan's office with my attorney and Tom Fitzgerald, and I raised not one, but I think seven or eight issues with the current ordinance that are flawed, completely flawed. I've heard it's a great written ordinance, but then you heard him say, but it's got problems. Steve's raised some good issues. Why wouldn't we fix those issues? That was my attempt. Now, I can give you the current ordinance, which is honestly, you know, all this, so much due diligence, so much thought put into it, it literally is a paragraph in the sense. The purpose statement came right out of state law. The definition is the same, we didn't change the definition. The application requirements, they're what they are. It references KRS 100, 211. But then there's basically proximity, 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 and then the Board of Adjustments may. I will tell you that Board of Adjustments sentence can't happen. As your director, that can't happen. The Board of Adjustments can't hire a consultant. They're not the entity, you are the entity, that hires, fires, controls the budget, controls contracts. You're my boss. The Board of Adjustments has no standing to basically enter into a contract with a consultant. escrow however many thousands of dollars that they would request the client to put up to hire such a consultant. In that case, we'd have to file an application, come to the Board of Adjustments, table it. After they make the request, the developer hire a consultant. The Planning Commission would have to put out an RFP or RFQ, not the Board of Adjustments. We would enter into a contract. We'd have to know a scope of work to get a bond amount to then take, ask the developer to post, let's say, $100,000 for an environmental study or whatever it is. We would escrow that, not the Board of Adjustments. That paragraph in Article 7 today can't happen procedurally. Our Board of Adjustments has no standing as a legal entity other than to be a hearing board for variances and conditional use permits. The Planning Commission is the entity that would have to enter into a contract with a consultant, post the bond. So, the board would have to, we'd have to start a hearing, table a hearing, hire a consultant, and then somehow come back to a hearing after you all got a consultant in play. Seems pretty burdensome to me and seems pretty burdensome to an applicant. And as you heard, we are making this application completely different than 36 other CUPs we do in this book. That one application is what I'll call supersized application. Mr. Morgan made a comment about the letters, they wrote letters. We don't write letters to property owners. Legally, we'd have to write letters to everyone that's adjacent to every property owner at 55 cents a pop. The applicant's required to give us that list. That'd be thousands of Bull County property owners if we did a CUP from county line to county line. Thousands of dollars in property. So, we'd have to ask them for a special amount more than our typical 291. We'd have to say, hey, our fee's 291, but for you, we need $10,000 for postage or whatever it'd be. We can't put signs across 6,000 properties in Bull County. We only got 50 in the closet. We could ask them to buy another 5,000, let's say. But the idea that the staff, what we typically do on the Board of Adjustments would totally be different under this one CUP. Now, the beauty of this chart, by making some things a CUP, that is manageable. That in a section of this pipeline where they might have to get a conditional use permit, let's say in the highway commercial section, maybe we're only dealing with 80 parcels. We could do that. But this whole idea of this county-wide CUP, I would, I would tell you as a planner, there's no other place in the whole state of Kentucky that has, maybe Madison County now, that now has a conditional use requirement that's 30 miles long. Conditional uses by nature in the statute are site-specific, project-specific. Sometimes they're two or three parcels, but to say we got a CUP that is the whole I-65 corridor, it just doesn't make sense to what KRS 100 is telling us. I think a specific use standard is the way. Now, on the phone call with Mr. Fitzgerald, he agreed. Going to specific use standard, it was an option. They chose the CUP. Requiring a rezoning was an option. All his information on this land use protection was based on one Colorado incident. It's not been tested in Kentucky. Our goal here is to categorize a use and determine when and where it goes in effect under what rules. It's that simple. I think what we've written makes sense. If we don't like the plating requirement, let's move it out. But the issue I'm struggling with to this day is still the preemption issue on the federal level. I still don't know where we stand with that. We've had Bruce write a letter on that. The non-conforming use of the pipeline, heck, the pipeline's in the ground. You've heard them say, I've heard them say, it's 70 years old. It's this, by their own admission, it predates zoning. How's that not non-conformant or grandfathered in? No one would argue it's not grandfathered in. So, the premise is you turn the valve on and the new product shoots through. Oops, change of use, come into compliance with the rules. Yet, as you just heard, the definition of the pipeline, hazardous pipeline, their definition, and it lists all these different kinds of products, crude oil, gas, blah, 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 natural gas, liquid, whatever, it's in the same definition. So, how is that a change of use if the pipeline is a hazardous pipeline? How are we changing the use if it's, the product's changing? Again, they've got an illegal opinion on that. We feel differently. Henry and I have talked about that. That question's not been answered for us. So, I'm gonna summarize with this. We're just the recommendation body on the zoning ordinance, as the chairman has said. At this point, old language, new language, I'm on the fence on it. It's not a deal breaker for me. There's so many other positive things in here, and there haven't been a single comment come before this hearing on signs. I did meet with the chamber, we went out to all the business owners, positive comments. Realtors, positive comments. Developers, surveyors, engineers, not a single person is in this room that's told you, pointing out a single thing except the Airbnb and the pipeline. But what's interesting is ultimate city and county get to make this decision. We recommend a change and they take it. And what I think's positive here, to go to their point, we will get a legal review. The city attorney and our new county attorney weren't involved in this process. We send this version to them, they're gonna scrutinize it, they're gonna look at it, and they may change it, which is fine with us. We don't set the law in Bull County. We only put a recommendation forward, and ultimately, those governments adopt their book and it says whatever it says, and then we administer it. That's what I've learned in my 30 years, that's how the process works. You don't get your feelings hurt. It's an attempt to do something. I think it reads well. If it needs to be changed, let's change it. We don't need anything more than to put a proposal forward to the city and the county and let them take it where they take it. And then these guys can go talk to them and lobby those folks and ask them what they want to ask them and make their point. I think there's two good proposals right now, but I can tell you this Article 7, when you heard it's not in the book, that's another problem. The day I started here, I didn't understand why there were all these amendments from prior years that weren't in my book, my physical book. Well, the issue is, we don't have digital copies, it's not codified. No, it's not codified because that amendment in 16 was never put in the book. That's why it's not on the website. It is confusing. That's one of the reasons to do this whole project. It's not a project I wanted to do, but with all the amendments over the years since '04 and all the texts scattered everywhere, everyone's books looking different, the idea was to streamline, codify, organize, and get a new ordinance in play that we can put on the website and make our development community understand what our rules are in this community. We've done half the book, and I think we need to move forward and get the other half of the book moving. I'm good with whatever you guys want to do with the pipeline verbiage. I think Article 7 currently is flawed. I can point to your exact paragraphs in there. The Board of Adjustment one is one. If you keep the old language, that paragraph needs to go. That's my recommendation. And then the two governments above us, the legal gurus there, can study up on what that says. It probably needs to be changed to put you all in that role of that consultant hiring. Yes, sir.
I want to commend you for, I agree that we, it's our responsibility to throw things a different way and try to improve what we have. And I think Mr. Kennedy's tried in that regard. A question I have is, what, if any, other means of transportation for hazardous liquids are there?
Well, that's interesting you mention that. It's almost like we talked for, I mean, we didn't, you didn't ask me this, but I was hoping someone would ask that question. It's moving up and down our highways right now. It's moving up and down our rail lines right now. It is regulated under the federal government in those situations. There's this, there's this argument somehow this would not be under the federal government scrutiny, which that question really needs to be answered. Because if that's... Absolutely. And the issue that we have here is if that's the case, we don't even have standing to have anything in our book, truthfully. And that's something we need to figure out before we get into a legal fight with the $18,600 we have in our budget for legal. Okay? That's something we need to talk about. But it is moving up and down the highways and the railroads. And I would ask you, show me anywhere in the United States where a product is moving up and down the highway, railroad, waterways, or pipeline is regulated by a planning, the product moving state to state, coast to coast, is regulated by Planning and Zoning Commission in the United States. Pipelines might be, compressor statements, compressor stations might be, a maintenance building. But show me a product that moves around this country by rail, water, with pipeline, road, is being regulated by planning and zoning. I'll tell you, I don't know of any. So, this whole issue that somehow we're gonna regulate a new flow of a product in an existing pipeline in the ground troubles me. And it worries me that, as you heard, a $5 billion investment, they're not gonna back down from a fight. And we're the lone wolf with one other county here to take this on with an $18,000 budget. We're gonna get there someday, maybe. Maybe we won't. I hope we don't. I'm retirement age come December, so, I mean, state retirement age, so I don't think it'll ever be my fight. So, I'm not married to it. But at the end of the day, I think we gotta think about our resources, we gotta think about our ordinance, we gotta think about our county. I think the strongest part of this is the prohibition in residential neighborhoods. Yes, that pipeline goes through them today. And if they, if we can determine there's a change of use and take an enforcement posture, our position is it can't be in a residential neighborhood, period. You have other options. And that's what I think this version of the ordinance attempts to do. So, that's kind of my position on it, and I'm glad to answer any questions you guys might have. Again, it's just one issue of many. Any other questions you have in the whole text, I'd be glad to answer them.
Anyone else like to speak? Has not to, we have a question from you. Hearing no one else due to timeframe, and we have to be out here 11 o'clock and next clock's getting a minute slow. We're gonna need a motion here to either table or approve this ordinance as being presented.
One, sorry, one other thing?
Yes, Steve.
Presented with, again, I forgot Henry's changes. The version that you've got, as you know, Henry did a little... There was not an item in Article 5, but there were a handful of housekeeping items in Article 4. Henry, there is a standout right here. So, again, we're fine if you all want to table it, but there's only a handful of changes in red here. One of them is the ag district proposal. I forgot to mention that, sorry. The first page right there is the big one. The ag district, as you know, we were proposing to make it a straight five-acre district. We've scaled that back to 50,000 square foot. That's a weird number. I understand one acre is 43,560. But we made it an acre and a quarter as a compromise after talking to some of the engineers and surveyors. We don't want to hurt anybody out there who wants to cut off lots off their farm at this point in time. So, we made the ag district a 50,000 square foot minimum. The RR district goes to 40,000, a tad bit under an acre for a very strategic reason. We want to make these different, different between the ag and different between the RR. And they're nice, clean numbers, 100 by 500, 100 by 400, which make nice, clean lots if they're cut off. So, that, we revised that from the last draft. The rest of them are housekeeping in nature, they're in red, and there are things Henry found related to the signed ordinance verbiage, specific terms that we deleted to relate to campaign signs, personal expression signs, and election signs. Or what was the third one, Henry? Campaign signs were deleted, personal expression.
It's just anything that suggested possible content that was acceptable.
And so, those things in red are the amendments. So, our formal recommendations, the draft you have, the 110 pages, with these changes in red on those pages. And there was not a change in Article 5 that he found. Sorry about that.
Play for the commission. When you move that we table it, 30 seconds. Questions discussed on the motion to table. Hearing none. All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six. Go to unanimous, time is tabled.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Is there any guidance about tabling and the... Yeah, the intent behind that, anything you need for the next meeting is what I'm asking.
I don't have an answer for that.
Okay.
Well, I mean, the recent incident, I would like to make, I guess, what I've heard from Mr. Morgan was new information for me that I would be, would want this to stand up before this amendment. You know, and like, you know, more than likely, this is gonna happen when none of us are going to be, you know, on this floor. And I would for sure want this to stand up before.
What we could do is, again, we...
Can we get a copy of the current written...
Yeah, I've got it right here.
So, we can study that for the next meeting.
Yep, you guys can, you can pass it down. I think what might piggyback on our commissioner's recommendation is we've been talking with the new county judge, our new county attorney about kind of everything we do, actually. Maybe it's appropriate for us to get the city attorney and the county attorney and our attorney and Bruce to sit down, at least have an initial discussion about where the city and the county want to see us go with this. And they could start to study. They've had it, but they haven't really sat down with Henry and had a dialogue yet. And I think Henry could communicate all the issues that have been raised and at this point in the hearing with the city attorney and the county attorney, and they can start a dialogue about what they think about the issue that Commissioner Rochester just raised, where we stand on that. Because I want to point out one extra issue. There's been some discussion about pro bono work and Tom Fitzgerald. At the end of the day, we have one hired counsel firm. We also have the advantage of the city and the county as an agency of the city and the county. We also have an insurance carrier who's gonna play a role if someday we have a legal discussion. We would be assigned counsel through any kind of issue there if we ever gotten an issue where we needed to use Cincinnati Insurance to be a claim, you know, if we ever were charged or claims were brought against us for any kind of damages or taking. I think it's important that at some point, there's gonna be a legal team, and it's always gonna include the city and the county, the county judge, the city manager, and our attorney. And then there could be outside attorneys hired or firms hired if we got into a special. But this relationship between the planning commission as a legal team and the pipeline committee and any legal counsel, there's nothing in writing. I have asked for over a year and a half to get something in writing from Mr. Fitzgerald that if he's gonna offer his services for free to the planning commission, I want him in writing. I want something contractual. I don't have that. I don't have anything from Mr. Morgan. I'm not sure we want that at this point. But at some point, I've been told, we got free legal service, but all I know is we got one contract and one set of attorneys that serve the planning commission and the city and the county. So, I think it's smart if we hole up with our legal team and do some discussion and maybe they can come back and report to you guys on what they think the next step ought to be. At the end of the day, again, I'm anxious to get this ordinance moving forward for some other reasons related to pending projects. We got a restaurant right now that said, we're gonna wait till y'all figure out what you're doing with your parking. We like the new stuff, but we're just gonna wait. We got another major investment that's coming our way on the bypass. It said the same thing, what's up with your zoning ordinance? Is it new, is it old? When you go into effect, it's at this point, it's a process. So, I'm fine with this table in another month, but I'd ask at some point, maybe we leave the old stuff in, hybrid, but we need to move on with the other 110 pages would be my preference, or not, and then move on from there. So, I'll just leave it at that.
Mr. Chairman?
No, sorry, we got more.
One, one sentence.
Next. I have this new business advisory committee, any favor reported?
They didn't need...
Nothing. Personnel committee met, we evaluated Steve, and he got by by...
That much?
No. We gave him an excellent evaluation. We gave him an excellent evaluation, and the only thing we have to bet is for his personal growth, we even left that up to Steve for his personal growth. We did not have anything that we needed to add to that, but we give him the opportunity to do that and fill out on his application for his, uh, for his personal growth. We discussed Lisa's evaluation, and it was very positive, and I think if we, if we want to get her to raise a few cents or not.
Is our in the budget?
Our in the budget.
Is it in the budget?
Yeah, right, okay. So we really appreciate Lisa's work, and she had a very positive evaluation as well. None to report, we don't need any motions on that. Budget committee report anything on that territory? Nothing to report. Any other new business? Hearing none. Any announcements? Hearing none. Yes, Mark?
Very briefly, if Mr. Fitzgerald was the individual who tried the only hazardous liquid pipeline case before the Supreme Court of Kentucky successfully, if we can get him to assist us in this meeting that Steve is talking about for free, I don't know with the city attorney, county attorney, our council, P and Z council, I don't know why we wouldn't do that. If you would like me to do that, I will do that, but I don't want to do it if he's going to be insulted and told that he may not attend the meeting.
Oh, I would be 100% for that, and I think the commission would do.
Thank you.
I don't think there's any issue there at all.
Thank you. I'll try to be of assistance.
Okay, thank you so much, appreciate it very much. Any other goods for the order? Hearing none, we need a motion adjourned.
I need my motion adjourned.
His moves. Just leave a second. All in favor? Go to unanimous. Thank you all very much.